You know what, I just, I aim to please everyone, including. Now you're pushing it. Right here. So you're getting. Like I said, I aim to please. Didn't miss that. Didn't miss that. He did send a note, he said, if I absolutely need to come, I would come, but I really don't want to. No, that's the majority of those who voted. All right, where's Chris? He's gone, so.
Entire motto on Church Street a couple times.
That's my, that's my mask. Coughing any other. Please.
At the end of it.
Any resolution.
I think at the beginning.
A resolution is passed by a majority of those who voted. So that about wraps up the meeting today. Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order. Is everybody ready? Are we ready on filming? Filming? Filming. Good evening, we're going to call this meeting to order. This is the, uh, the last meeting of the, of the year for the Flemington Planning Board. It's Tuesday, December 10th. This meeting is being held in conform to the Open Public Meetings Act. All rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Eileen.
Mrs. Ingelhart? Here. Ms. Giffen? Here. Mr. Campion? Here. Mayor Driver?
Present.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mrs. Pedrick?
Here.
Mr. Runyon?
Here.
Mr. Bundy?
Here.
Mr. Hane?
Here.
Mr. Norton?
Here.
Mr. Hill is sick. Ms. Kozinski?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Ms. McManus?
Here.
And Mr. Traubler is excused.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Item number one on the agenda, as it always is, is a slot for public comments on applications not currently being heard in front of this board. Are there members of the public that would like to make a comment? Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay. Elaine Gorman?
Move this up a little bit. I'm sorry, just to put more in the middle. Thank you.
Elaine Gorman, 34 New York Avenue. I know that I have sat through a lot of discussion concerning the Flemington Outdoors sign. And of course, there's been a lot of discussion in the community on that. I just thought I might like to bring to your attention that at the council meeting last evening, a concerned citizen brought to the attention of the Borough Council a sign that that person felt was offensive, which is out on our large circle. I don't know how many of you may have seen it. So there was some discussion in council concerning the contents of the sign. So my comment tonight to you is, when you are considering the, I think they call it the moving wall, but the signage that would be on that major circle, to be sure that there is an agency or a group or whoever appointed to oversee the content of any of the material that would be in public view on that major circle as you enter the borough. And I think this example of this billboard, which can be seen either going north or south on 202, just kind of sharpens that and brings it to our attention that this is something we need to be very careful about and to be aware of and be sure that that is tended to by some agency or whatever to oversee the content of any signs that go up in the borough. And I just wanted to say thank you to all of you because I know you're all volunteers and I know how time consuming and how much work these kinds of jobs take. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you on the board, to the professionals, and wish you all happy, happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other items, any other members of the public that would make a comment? With no more show of hands, let's move on to item number two, which are mayor comments.
So last night at council, council did adopt a resolution designating Captiva Mainstreet LLC as designated redevelopment of the Global Ag property. I also got confirmation today and met very briefly for like 12 minutes walking through mud puddles over at the Nilkant property. Cardinal Capital Management has control of that property. And they are excited to be moving forward as well. We talked about, you know, the importance of that property as a gateway property in town. And it's, I think it's, other than the Mainstreet properties, I do think it's one of the most important pieces of property in town for its visibility. As, so what will take place there? They are aware that the depot needs to stay, that it could possibly be moved, but it has to stay on the parcel. We talked about ideas for that very briefly, whether coffee shop. I suggested brewery because it would be nice to have one, 362 feet from my house. And other things that could go in there, as well as some other ideas. So they, the CEO of that company will be coming into town in January. Will set up a public meeting like we did with Captiva for them to present their concept plan for, as well as what they want to do. They are aware of the redevelopment plan and the restrictions on that as well. They're also talking about hospital, with some kind of perhaps social housing with the hospital on it. We received $100,000 grant from the state for our opportunity zone marking efforts. The plans for that are a series of charrettes. There will be one for the residents, one for business owners, and one for property owners. And probably a fourth one with everybody together in the same room. I also had on my list to talk about that sign on 202. I did make several phone calls about that. I'm looking into if anything can be done. It appears that there's probably a free speech issue going on, that we can't regulate that speech. You know, because MFN could mean lots of different things to lots of different people. And it's unfortunate, but I will also be reaching out to the owner of that sign, which is one Jack Cust, and just express my displeasure on that as well. I've also started to put together a list, and I would encourage other planning board members to do the same, some goals for 2020 among mine. And I'm circling back to the charrettes, as well as looking at that as a master plan. And I really, and Todd and Susan get tired of me saying we need to look at the parking minimums to go back and look at that, as well as other development thoughts and ideas for creative development around town. And that's it.
Great, thank you. Moving on to council items. Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number four, approval on the minutes from the October 22nd regular meeting. I need a motion and a second.
Can I just get some clarity on what I can and can't vote for with these minutes?
You were present. If you're present, you can.
Even though I may have, I don't know if that was a meeting I recused myself because it was.
I believe that was one of the ones that you were recused from. And left a day off.
Yeah, you're just voting on the recitation of the minutes themselves. And if you were present at the meeting, you don't have to. You're voting on the portion of the minutes that you were allowed to adopt, based upon your presence at that meeting.
And it's the same thing like Edna arrived at 7:40? So it's really just, is this an accurate representation of the minutes of the?
Well, you were present on what you participated in.
Okay.
I do have just one correction. Mr. Bundy was not, I had put ineligible to vote on one of the pages, but he was actually excused, he was not present. And Mayor Driver was also not present. So on the first page, under who was present and who was excused, I added Mr. Bundy and Mayor Driver as not being excused. Are those acceptable for the people that made the motion and second?
Yes.
Mr. Hane?
Yes.
Mrs. Pedrick? Mrs. Ingelhart?
Abstained.
Ms. Giffen?
Yeah.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mayor Driver?
Abstained.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Bundy?
Abstained.
Okay, moving on, thank you. Item number five is the approval of the minutes from the November 4th regular meeting minutes. Regular meeting. Need a motion and a second.
Also move.
I'm sorry, who was the second? Thank you. Mayor Driver?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingelhart?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Abstained.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Pedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Hane?
Thank you. Item number six on the agenda this evening is the resolution for Flemington Outdoor LLC, which is block 44, lot 6, also known as 307 Route 202. The approval of preliminary and final site plan use and bulk variances. So Kara, can you? Help me out here.
Sure, with?
So we have a resolution in front of us. I believe that there was some redlining and corrections too. This is the most current that we have in front of us.
It is, yes. The final changes, which did make it into what's in your packet, occurred on the third from the bottom paragraph on page seven. There was just a change for the last sentence of that paragraph. It starts with the property is currently overdeveloped. Last sentence of that paragraph was changed to that this is in part reflected by the reduction in impervious coverage by nearly 40%. Forty was a typo. And then the other change was with regard to condition number one, which is on page 13. And there was an addition there. So that paragraph now reads, condition number one, the applicant will provide proof of any and all approvals, certificates, and the like required from other municipal, county, or state agencies having jurisdiction over the application or letter of no interest or exemption therefrom, including but not limited to any amended approvals that may be required from the DOT in light of the application and plans approved by the board. So again, both of those changes made it to what is in your packet, that they were the final changes. This has been reviewed by all the board's professionals, as well as the applicant's counsel, and all of the changes have been incorporated.
I'm sorry, can I just ask a quick question? Is this the same as the latest that was distributed to us electronically?
The language of any changes since then? Okay. Correct. I think they put the attachments on the time, what's printed out today, because they were just basically.
No, it's fine.
And the adoption of the resolution is by a majority of vote, that of those who voted yes on the application?
Correct.
Correct?
And they are all outlined in the resolution itself. I'd like to make it easy.
Okay, so of those who voted yes, I need a motion and a second.
I'll move.
Second.
Eileen?
Mrs. Ingelhart?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Pedrick?
And Mr. Hill is absent. Okay, thank you.
Just on that one, does the number need to get fixed on that? Because it's kind of weird.
It says 505, 11, and 11, the page number.
Just, because if somebody's looking at that.
Oh, the second, yeah.
Move to page 5.
For. Just page 22.
On the resolution.
Page 17, that's 17.
Mine's not like that, so it may have happened when it was printed out.
It may have, when I printed out the edited copy. I assume that your office will send me.
Well, I'll do that. You know what I'll do? Why don't I incorporate the voting? And then I'll send you over a complete copy, because mine's numbered properly from 1 to 23 with the attachments. So I'll add in the voting, and then I'll send you over a PDF of everything. That could be signed and put that right where it needs to go.
Right, you probably did a fault in Word or whatever. Right, or some kind of format.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Welcome. Okay, item number seven on the agenda is the resolution for 70 Church Street Spice Factory LLC, also known as block 39, lot 3, 70 Church Street. The approval of the final site plan.
Okay, now on this one, I do have some changes that did not make it into your packet. Eileen, I do have a copy for you, but I'll do the same thing with this, do all the attachments, and then we send it to you. The resolution was submitted to the board's professionals. Its comment, your comments were incorporated. These two changes are very minor. These came directly from the applicant's counsel. If we look at page 2 of 16, the last paragraph on the bottom, it will read, the property presently contains what is known and referred to as the Spice Factory Building, which contains office space, comma, a second building, which contains a hair salon and related parking and site improvements. The rest of it remains the same. And then we go to the first paragraph on page three, under section two. And that first sentence will be amended to read, the project consists of the renovation of the Spice Factory Building to add residential floors to the existing office space and the hair salon. Take out the word which, will remain. Everything else stays the same.
Okay. Excuse me.
Yes.
The way it's reading, you're adding second floors to the hair salon?
No, so, and that was the way it sounded originally. So add residential floors to the existing office space, comma, and the hair salon will remain. No.
Got a lovely hand this round. Thank you for that. So of those who were qualified and voted yes and were not absent, I need a motion and a second.
I'll move.
Thank you, Brian.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Edna. Eileen?
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mrs. Pedrick?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingelhart?
Abstained.
Um, excuse me, sorry about that.
Ms. Giffen?
Yeah, Ms. Giffen?
Yeah.
And Mr. Norton?
Yes. Thank you. And might I thank you, Kara, that it's really nice to have this little chart at the end of each.
It's a luxury, thank you.
It really is a luxury to think back of where the votes fell on an application.
A lot of times we would vote and then be like, oh, wait a minute, I can't do that.
It's, the little cheat sheets always help.
Thank you.
Item number eight on the agenda this evening is completeness for Shammy Shine, Route 12 Washington Gas, block 45, lot 5, site plan. I want to reference for the board that Kara's firm has a conflict of interest for Shammy Shine. And the attorney for the, for our board will be Bill Giannos, resurrecting from retirement. And so I had a lovely conversation with Bill. And so Kara is not to speak on this. However, based on what Bob has to say, I believe that we do not, I did not ask Bill to come this evening, nor did I ask the applicant to come this evening, because I believe the application is incomplete, according to Bob and our professionals. So Bob, you have the floor.
Sure, so I wrote up on the report of November 23rd outlining the documentation we have. First paragraph on the bottom, A, and second paragraph on page 2, B, really kind of go to the heart of the application. It's a use variance, it's an expansion of a nonconforming use. And the applicant did not apply for a use variance. So by default, it's a, it's a incomplete submission. And being it's ultimately going to be a use variance, I would assume that the two council people will probably not participate in any aspect of the application. B on the second page is something the applicant has to deal with. Either he's going to modify the plan to reduce the coverage, so he doesn't need a variance, or he's going to have to seek a variance for that. So there's several options he has there. I don't know which one he's going to choose when he comes back, but there likely is a possibility of another variance that associated with the longer number. And then I went through all the documentation that's been received. And then as you go to page three, I kind of outlined the various items that are here, which ones are incomplete, which ones I would defer to the board on. And there's a whole litany of them. If somebody wants with you, I'll save the trouble of going through all those. They're mostly, these are all related to the site plan aspect of the application. Again, when they refile, they're going to have to file for a use variance and maybe other requirements that come as a result of that. But on the bottom of page four, again, I go to my normal thing with the boards in agreement. This is the action I would recommend you take if you agree with this, the action you're going to take, will be to grant a temporary waiver on item 65 on here, which was a, just the exhibits they would present at the hearing itself. Item 66 was something I would recommend you actually waive. That's providing a building for, the only building on this site is the car wash facility. There's nothing to be gained by having a floor plan of that particular structure. They provided architectural plans, they provided elevations, but not a floor plan. So I would recommend you waive 66. And then 67 and 69 would just be temporary waivers. Again, documentation that they would provide at the hearing. And if you, if you accept those regulations, I outlined on the bottom that you're deeming the application to be incomplete. And I list all the items that would be incomplete for. And you should add to that fact that it would also be a use variance that they would need to apply for.
Thank you. So Kara, I know you're not the attorney on this. So just on any application, is deeming it incomplete any different than deeming an application incomplete with exceptions and partial waivers? Or is it just, is it either? Is it yes, no at this point? Pass, go, do not, like, on any application?
In general.
I would say in this case, you're, by giving some of the waivers and you're giving the applicant some direction as to what? When he comes back to revise the plan. For example, if you weren't going to waive some of the additional detail, like the isometrics and whatnot, you should tell him tonight you're not going to waive it. So he knows when he comes back, he has to provide it. But if you, if you're inclined to.
I just know that deeming an application incomplete, it's sort of the clock stops. Correct. On our side. So I'm not sure whether or not having partial waivers or things is, I feel like we're engaging with the applicant.
If you're comfortable with that, just deeming it complete for those items. And when they come back, you deal with this all over again.
And my assumption is though, based on your due diligence of going through any application, that as we've said before, on completeness issues, you are the resident completeness pro. So typically, if you say, listen, this is where I see what you should be doing. And for the board's application, in some municipalities, completeness is done purely administratively. And it's not even, so, so the idea here is, so I guess I'm giving you direction that if, I would rather say that the application is incomplete, period, end of story. However, you're in conversation with the applicant, and we are ultimately going to follow your lead unless there's somebody that vehemently disagrees with something in your expertise.
Well, I give you the reasons why I think you should do something, but ultimately you do it. So if you want to just deem it incomplete, I'm telling you right now, when and if this comes back, I'm going to make the same recommendation, so.
I hope you can just handle everything at once, rather than doing things piecemeal.
I agree.
That's, that's why I was, and again, I'm not debating on whether or not your recommendations are adequate, because I think they, they always cross every T and dot every.
And for all the, all the items noted in that, temporary waiver items, a partial waiver, just all those items, it's incomplete for all those items, in addition to the fact that it's a use variance.
Okay, so at this point, I would need a motion to deem the application incomplete at this point.
I know.
Second.
Eileen?
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingelhart?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen? Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Pedrick? Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Hane?
Yes.
Thank you. And just procedurally now, now that you're back on the, on our docket, Kara, when you're not the attorney for the board for this application, we just need to, who coordinates the? Is that, is that between Eileen and myself on when Bill comes and when he doesn't?
Yes. So anytime that you would normally include me on an application, it will just be Bill on my side.
So what we need to do, just based on, from a billing perspective and an applicant perspective, is when we see Shammy Shine again, we really need to have it in a chunk, either at the beginning or the, or the, you know, something that would allow us to not have two attorneys here reading and, you know, for all the things to go through. Okay?
Mr. Giannos is kind of coming out of retirement, and he will put him first, if possible.
Let, let, let you and I, let you and I talk about when, when we put Bill on. My agreement with Bill was that, that we would make sure that we would keep, because it's really not our line, it's the applicant's line, that we would keep it down, so that he wasn't sitting out the audience.
It was funny, because I saw him copied on the email for this, and it was like, oh, somebody mistakenly put him on the.
I gotta tell you, it really was, when we said, I mean, when the suggestion was made, and thank you Kara, it was, I would say, as only for those that remember Bill, and I don't think everybody does, I think the answer was yes before the question even came out. So he definitely wants to help, which is great. Okay, item number nine is discussion on the 2020 census survey. If you remember last, we, we did put together a subcommittee of myself, Susan, Karen, Brian.
Yeah.
And, but all we really need now, there's two, there's two requests of me, is that we come up with some dates. And I have a feeling that we will probably not end up finding a date that works for everyone, but we can try. And if you remember what this was for, was the planning board was invited to answer questions by ourselves, together. It was up to the board's prerogative to send.
Alison Jackson.
Alison Jackson. Some feedback, and that she would have a work session that we wanted to do early in the morning, I think with the request sometime in January. And then I would like to ask Chris, if you could go back to council and say, like, I'd like to do it with council. I mean, I think, even though, if you remember when Ms. Jackson was here, she said, no, no, no. She said, you know, that we like to do it with the planning board, and we like to have the planning board as a work session, talk about goals and objectives and all those great things that you get from the census. But at least an olive branch to say to the council, hey, we're going to pick this date. I don't know what, we'll ever pick a day that we can get. You know, some folks from council, some folks from planning board. But I think as a formal request, and I'll send you a note too, just to follow it up, to say like, I just, I feel awkward answering or asking anybody to do something with regards to town and not have our council. to do something with regards to town and not have our council.
At least invited, they don't, you know, they can't make it, they can't make it.
So with that in mind, we did, we did commit to Ms. Jackson that we would have some dates for January. So I just wanted to throw it out there on, if there were anybody who had absolute, you know, I can't make it here, I can't make it there. I think Ms. Jackson actually in her, I saw in the notes that she wanted to start, she wanted to start fairly late and I missed that because I was thinking like, could we possibly do it as early as, you know, the first Friday in January, just to really get the ball rolling?
I actually, along that line, Mary Council, I, for 2020 with the census coming up, have a few people that I'm not ready to announce who it will be at a census committee.
Okay. Well, that, that, so we'll, maybe it's, and again, it's more of a, and then we have to look because when we have this meeting with Ms. Jackson and, and the professionals from the Census Bureau, I just, we just have to make sure that we are not in violation of any open public meetings.
As long as it's noticed.
No, I'm fine with it, but, but again, we only, we really have two people.
You want to make sure.
Yeah, so. And so I think she had called out that she was looking, according to the minutes, that she was looking for as late as January 8th. So...
This is the last meeting of the planning board. We've already had our last meeting of council over the year.
So, so what I wanted to do was get back, we did say that we'd get back, yeah, the first would be January 8th. The first workshop, that doesn't mean actually couldn't be before that because I know, looking at the dates, I had thrown out the third, which is the very first Friday. I threw out the sixth, which was the next Friday. Not to say the Fridays, it just seems to most...
Six is the Monday.
What's that? Oh, six is the Monday, then it would be the...
That's a reorg meeting.
Yeah, no, then it would be the 10th. And again, just to throw out dates and I'd like to get back, this is our last meeting, but we did, we did make the commitment that I would get back to Ms. Jackson on some dates and then she could start to schedule. She said early mornings was very good because not a lot of people were using the county building early in the morning.
I'm good the 3rd.
And again, I don't know if she's ready on the 3rd.
Okay.
So, but again, if there were other folks meeting, I didn't want to be presumptuous, but a lot of people have time off that week because it's, and I thought, hey, if you're off, maybe you want to volunteer some.
Todd, what time you suggest another 3rd?
I would say as early as possible. The last meeting we had were like 7:00 AM, I mean, they were early meetings. So you had your day at the, and I don't know what, does anybody remember what time commitment she was looking for?
Is this for the full, the full, is this for committee or the full?
I, again...
No, it was to represent the committee, committee, you know, it had to be the whole committee. It just needs representation.
And again, I want to make it open for, for, for all. I just wanted, again, if there were some dates that, you know, if you said, oh my goodness, I absolutely can't, I'm on vacation, there's, like, I know the, I happen to be gone the 16th and 17th of January, I just don't, like, count it. Right, and so there's two, two folks. So it can't be the 16th or 17th, but I just would like to get back with some dates. So if we throw out...
Any of those that you just mentioned are fine.
The 3rd.
Except for the reorg meeting, obviously.
The 10th. If there was any other dates. And I am shooting for 7:00 AM at... Yeah, I think it works for, for most people that have to get some cases. So we can start with those. Like I said, her, her, looking back at the minutes...
Why don't you go back with those two and see what she says?
Okay.
I can do either those at 7:00 AM and then I can only do the 10th.
Is it, is it, do you want it to be, I mean, we can make it earlier. See, it's always for me, I'm like, I leave at 5:30 in the morning, so it doesn't really matter for me.
Well, I, I would have to take some time off, but I would do that for it.
And that's why I said the earlier the better because then I don't, it's almost like it's on commute time for me.
For you, yeah. No, I would have to take some time.
So earlier or not?
So what she is saying is even earlier than 7:00 AM is fine with her, is that?
No.
No? I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
So it sounds like seven is fine. Seven is good.
Seven is good?
I would agree, yes.
Okay.
I don't mean to miss off work.
Yeah. That's what I was trying to juggle too. I was trying to juggle the same thing. Oh, like...
And this is for all of us or just...
It could be, it could be, or like I said, it's, if you remember what Ms. Jackson asked for was, for us to submit, could be together, it could be by ourselves on issues surrounding town. Because the census permeates so many things in our lives that we didn't think of. We won that big census pack. So I would say at this point, absolutely, I would start with the committee, but it could be for others as well as council at the same time. And then we would just have to make sure we can notice that if it was that early.
Well, if we get a date confirmed after, then we can provide that notice.
How long was she looking for?
I don't, that's what I was thinking.
Because that's another thing, like, if it's going to be, you know, on half a day meeting, that's different.
If it's going to be a half a day meeting, then for me, I almost have to move it to like a Saturday.
Exactly.
Yeah, same.
Or start in the evening so we have...
Or start in the evening, like a five...
You know, three hours work. As I say, if it's going to be three hours from 7:00 in the morning, that's, you know, someone's got to work that. That's a different situation.
All right. Eileen, can I ask you to reach out to her with those dates?
Reach out about the dates and...
The 3rd to 10.
Approximately around that time.
7:00 AM, approximately that time. Could it be on a Saturday? Could it be in the evening? I wanted to show our exuberance and our participation.
And see what availability that she has as well.
Yes.
Okay.
Because again, I can't tell where she said, the first meeting would be January 8th for the superintendents. I think that's just the first one that she scheduled. And that's the superintendents of schools that she scheduled, but it doesn't mean that we could... Okay? Oh, that's great, guys, thank you. All righty. Next on the agenda is chair items. Under HPC comments, I did want to see what, as we go through 2020, if you remember, I think it was last year, we put HPC comments and we put them within chair items because it made the most sense. But as we have these longer and longer meetings and longer applications, I do think that we would want to hear from the HPC earlier in the evening. I just wanted to throw that out as a SOP for 2020, whether it's, you know, mayor comments, council comments, HPC, whether it comes after the minutes. But I think to, we've all seen members of the HPC wait and wait and wait until it gets over, so.
So in the future, we'll get to after council.
Right, so I don't know, and we don't, we set the agenda, so that doesn't need a, I just wanted to sort of straw pull.
Usually reorg meetings that are reorg meetings.
Right, so I just wanted, you know, it's something that, that will come up for next year.
Absolutely.
So let's just remember that, Eileen. Our next meeting is January 6th and that is our reorg. Again, I'd like to, before we go into the 2019 Planning Board Annual Report...
I have a thing of 2020 dates, what they're like, they're notes, you know, this time.
Okay, so before, before we go into the...
Just to review before the reorg.
Right, before we go into the 2020, or the 2019 Annual Report, I did want to just say, just to try to get ahead of ourselves for 2020, is trying to capture the goals and objectives and really the projects that will be in front of this board. Granted, I'm being presumptuous because, because I'm not the chair for 2020, although I would obviously accept that if you all wanted me to do it. The, but the way I see it is we have took up bylaws for the planning board, which you really don't have. And if you remember, there were times of, you know, how does the meeting run? What's the order? Anything that could be spelled out, we have within our right as an organization to accept bylaws that are just ours, which are sort of rules of engagement. When, when we take public comment, when we don't take public comment, as long as it's all within the law. Kara has been assembling some other municipalities that really work well. So I see that adoption of some set of bylaws, preferably earlier than later. The census, whether, either whether it's everybody's participation or subcommittee. The master plan, we need, we need to have a updated master plan. We have a 2010 master plan, we have a 2014 reexamination of said master plan. But now we need a master plan which has to align with the work that we do with the opportunity zone as well as how that gels together with public charrettes and private charrettes and the things that the mayor has talked about. We have anything that we want to do with the opportunity zone and we have a comprehensive parking study. Those are the things on the docket, so again...
I have one, I have one more.
Oh, you have one more?
Well, we have started reviewing the HPC last year and, you know, obviously that got put aside for more pressing things, but that's still on my agenda.
I'd like to see that happen.
And then as well, in regards to the master plan, I just might note that I'd really love it if Beth could chat with, with us and talk to the mayor as well as Todd and I and remind us all what we had done in the past. And when I mean in the past, I mean 2010, 2014, 2015. And kind of explain to everybody what kind of budgets we had and more importantly, what kind of budgets we cut and kind of did things on our own to save money and this, that and the other thing. And if we've got this big opportunity to, you know, we, we had brought people in individually and had, you know, I literally was on the phone for hours calling people and scheduling people and doing kind of a more informal charrette last time, if you want to call it that. This is going to be a lot more formal and I want to take advantage of the fact that we're getting all of this great feedback all at one time. But in order to do that, that's a lot of processing and work that you've never had to do as much of before. So I'd like to kind of get an idea of the budget you're going to be throwing out to redo the master plan next year. Because I'm frankly concerned that we're not going to have the budget we need to do the job that needs to be done because we've cut it every single time. You know, you were like, well, I can reuse the statistics.
And now we're 10 years in.
Right. I bet.
Census next year.
Right, exactly. So Brian, Brian knows, again, it's kind of a planning nerd, kind of bugaboo of mine, but I want it done right. And it's not that you didn't do a good job in the past, but it needs to be done comprehensively this time.
So I will throw out there that that is actually a really good opportunity to ask the county for some money. They do give grants for the economic development.
Great idea.
Committing and I am quite certain that they pony up some money as long as we ask.
Right, I think that Beth needs to give us some feedback so we know what to ask.
Not a formal application process. The other thing are, you know, the beginning of the budget process is happening right now and it'd be really good to gather those numbers for Bill.
And that's why I asked for it now.
We have some state deadlines to meet this month and I can find out what they are tomorrow. Actually, they're sitting in the front seat of my car right now. I could run out to my car and find out what they are.
That would be great, Beth, too, because, you know, in the past, we've asked her, how much is it? And then we balk and we cut and cut and cut. I'd rather be prepared this time, to be prepared in 2019 for 2020 means a lot.
And I think, back to another council request for you, Chris, would be to say, when you have, I think like the bylaws, the census participation, I think we can absorb into our daily, even the HPC review to some extent. But if you remember the words, a comprehensive parking study and a master plan and what we do with the opportunity zone, when I say what we do, they all have to mesh together. And that's going to require yet another set of eyes to be able to, another set of professional eyes to make sure that they gel together.
So the $100,000 can pay for some of that.
But we don't, we want to make sure that there's a...
It has to be separate. And the $100,000 is a grant to the borough. The FCP is our partner on it, but it's specifically for, you know, making use of the, of the opportunity zone designation. And if we are to, you know, do a parking, you know, a comprehensive parking study...
Does that work in?
You know, I think that works in because I think it could also be one of the subjects when we do these charrettes, particularly with the business owners and the residence part. Because, you know, if, if we reduce the amount of parking required, say for a restaurant, does that impact the residents nearby? So they, they do play in with each other and I think that we should probably sit down and have a very good meeting, it might be one of those two hours on a Saturday morning meeting to say, okay, this is what our goals are with this. And the goals with the master plan, with the parking, comprehensive parking study tied into the charrette with updating, because it all loops back around, it's all circular ultimately.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think all of that, so just, and so I wanted to just, you know, come full circle and when you think of those projects, like, you, you don't need me here to tell you that I think that we are going to have to take my expectation, I think all of our expectations would be that we all need to be on one, if not two, of these subcommittees. And these, they, you know, in the past, we've always seen, you've seen how long things taken, like, like the sign ordinances or anything else where, where it does end up being just a few of us. But I really am, like, this is going to be a year that I think, from what I can tell, is going to be somewhat pivotal for this board to be able to participate at a higher level, to be able to absorb all of this work as well as our applications, which tend to be like, there are no simple applications anymore. I mean, every application is taking multiple meetings. And so if you could start thinking about, as you're over the holiday break or if you're, if you're taking a holiday break, to start thinking about what you might want to be on because while it's not a requirement, I can't imagine that all of us sitting up here won't be on one, two or three of these subcommittees. That my expectation would be that these subcommittees are almost autonomous and are running at the same time that our regular meeting schedule is running, so.
It's one of the reasons why things like the HPC, you know, get pushed to the side because we also were on three other committees at the same time.
So start thinking about that and process that. And again, when we have our reorg meeting and we outline, you know, subcommittees and I'd like to be able to not surprise anyone and, but I think at the end of the day, my expectation would be to start our reorg meeting with somewhat of a chart that has the projects and names. And I think we need to leave the reorg meeting where every, every box is filled some way, shape or form, and then you just say, great, we look forward to your report back. Which is not something that I've done a lot here, so I just, I think it's going to be necessary. Okay? Moving on to the 2019 Planning Board Annual Report.
Can I?
Yeah.
It's not for a second, so you put this out and I have a couple of questions. I don't know if it's for discussion tonight.
It was just more of a, I don't know if it should be for this meeting or for the reorg meeting or we could discuss meeting dates, certainly.
Yeah, so meeting dates. I'm confused about August 25th and I'm looking at my email.
Did I say August 20th? I think it's May 20th, it's the...
August 25th says conflict with council.
Says conflict with council.
I'm sorry, I think it should be May. It conflicts with the memorial, um, day.
You mean May 24th?
I'm sorry, May 20th, yes, the Tuesday in May.
That's, I see.
Okay, so that's...
That's a mistake on that.
Okay.
I talked to Sally this, this afternoon and because of the holiday, the council meeting was moved to Tuesday.
So I think what, once we look, because I think you had said, Eileen, that the dates, which we really need to adopt at our reorg meeting, but again, start...
We certainly can discuss that.
Right, start processing, like, some of the suggestions I would have based on what happened this year, I would, you know, I'd like to have our second meeting in November back if it doesn't fall on Thanksgiving week.
Yeah, the issue is that you have the league right before.
So again...
No, that's not the issue. The issue is we've taken so much heat over the years.
Because people say they were...
Because we, because when we used to have a second meeting in November, we took heat that we were having meetings when people were possibly out of town that week. So that's why we always dropped that second meeting. But we have a lot, we have a lot of business at the end of the year.
It depends, but I was going to say, I'd like to have that second November meeting to see where it falls. I certainly don't want a conflict with the, the league as well as, if you remember, in December, like, who, who would have thought that we had to cancel our last meeting because of snow on December 7? And I just don't want to run into, I feel like even tonight, you know, there's a lot of things to talk about and it all seems to end up at the end of the year. So when I looked at it, I, I just, boy, the second meeting in November would be welcome, I think.
Why don't we keep the second, the meeting, the second, the second meeting in November and we can always cancel it, you know, weeks ahead of time.
And the other thing was, I'd also like to have, if anybody sees, why don't you go home and look at the calendar and see where this falls? I'd also like to see if we can have a couple of meetings that fall, you know, there's, there's months where we have, it seems like some of our meetings are back to back with each other and then some of them are so far apart from each other that maybe we put in a couple of, you'd need a lot of coordination, but think of when we tried to have, when we asked to see if we could have some special meetings, even when we were looking at the, when we were thinking, even when we were looking at the, when we were thinking we were going to look at the HPC map, we couldn't get a second meeting in the summer.
Yeah, well, it was October.
Or October.
There's a lot of holidays.
Right, so again, all I would ask.
Meetings in the, in the.
What I would ask is that if there's a lull, and Eileen, you can.
Meetings. The league next, excuse me, the league next year is November 17 through 19. Just so we know, so you can.
And Thanksgiving is the 26th, that fourth Tuesday would be that Tuesday right before Thanksgiving.
Put the Tuesday before Thanksgiving back on the agenda, and then when people start complaining that we're sneaking stuff in at the end of the year, I'll remind them personally of it, so.
Like I tried to say last time, though, that in the past years, you took heat over the years. We now have, you have their stream, and people can look at them wherever they are. So the accessibility is different now than.
That's a good point.
So I think have the meetings and have more, we can get more done and get things achieved.
I think that the only thing, I think when I go back, just to make sure that we're all being transparent, it goes back to, at that point, it was, I think it was cut glass, and the vote happened on the Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
Obviously, we don't want to be votes, but if we get some business done and people can look into it and go on YouTube and.
But if there's a public meeting scheduled and there's an applicant, we can't say, oh, no, we can't deny you to show up. If there's a public meeting scheduled, we vote. I don't like, we'll vote. It's, not everybody goes on vacation that.
So let me ask you something, though. Is it better than to say on, because we can't have it, like, looking in November, if the league is the 17th through the 19th?
What day times, what days are those? Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, then I would say, you know, could it be any day, I mean, as long as we know it now, or could it be the first week in December, and we have three meetings in the summer?
Well, we already have one in the. I'm gonna suggest before also, because Sally and I had the same conversation regarding scheduling in November, I look at the November calendar, and we actually penciled in, but, you know, it's up to council then to approve, and they approved the calendar, to have a meeting on the Monday before Thanksgiving, just because it's the same thing.
Yeah.
We get so much in, council members want to get things done, perhaps they're leaving council, whatever, and they want to get it done, and that might be their last opportunity. And having only two meetings, one meeting in November and one meeting in December is a little bit unfair to any council members who might be leaving council if they have something they want to get accomplished before.
And frankly.
So we're looking at that as well, the Monday before. And then the other issue, we also suggested that we don't do the Monday before the league, but move it up a week. So November gets weird, and I don't have those same numbers, those same dates. I didn't write it down, it was, you know, looking at Sally's calendar in her office a few days ago.
And frankly, we're very often accused of being non-business friendly, and the reason why it gets tight at the end of the year is because applicants can't hear something halfway, you know, you can't hear it with one board at the end of the year and then continue it, you know, in January. So I'd rather have the Thursday, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving scheduled. That way, we run into problems in the future. We've got that meeting.
Yeah, looks like it almost has to be that 26th.
Yeah, it does, and like I said, I was frustrated years ago when we were accused of being not business friendly for having it that day. And it's the same, it's just the same if we don't have it, because it's not business friendly to make people wait from October to January to put in an application.
It is, so November 9th and 23rd is what we were looking at for council in November.
Also, folks, there's a fifth Monday in November on the 30th.
Right, so it could also be that Monday. It could be the 30th.
Yeah, but then you're on December 2nd, then you're like.
Then you got those two meetings close together.
Well, it's the 30th and then the 7th.
The 7th. So you got. 7th, okay.
I mean, does anybody have any thoughts? Election Eve, I think 2020 election might be very, I mean, it's just a very.
Big election.
It's, you know, I don't know if we want to have a, we usually have a meeting the day before election day, but it becomes difficult and.
I agree with that.
I don't know if there's another date that people want to come back and, you know, maybe suggest it's.
Why don't you do the first Monday?
Let's do.
Oh, let's do it for November.
If we do the 24th, the 10th does put it two weeks apart, so that's.
You could do the 10th and the 24th on November.
We could.
Just do two Tuesdays that month instead of a Monday and a Tuesday.
And again, we still might have conflicts, I know, because even when we look at the professionals, like, you all have different municipalities that you work for, and I'm just, again, I'd rather have more dates than not. The other time I feel like we end up with a lot of holes is, rightfully so, during the summer. So again, I think we just look, and I'll get it too, to see if, I'd like to just have an extra meeting here or there and say, hey, you know, we don't need that second meeting, but there's been meetings in August that we go through and say, oh, boy, we really, we need a quorum, you know, everybody's on vacation and absolutely, that's, you know.
These are all good things to think about, and then we can discuss.
And we can add a special meeting.
I know, but it's so much easier at the beginning of the year, put it on the calendar, schedule. I'd rather have more meetings than less, and then say, listen, we have a whole litany of meetings. So again, if you could think of subcommittees.
If we could add a meeting, that would, maybe three meetings to schedule it, like in August, I guess. Because I'd rather stick with the Monday, first Monday and Tuesday, because that's what people expect.
Yeah, I wouldn't move them, I would just add another in case. And we can always cancel. It's just, it's a lot easier to schedule a meeting in January.
It's a lot easier to cancel than it is to do a special meeting. It's a lot cheaper.
Right, and like I said, we do need to organize all the other professionals to make sure that, you know, there's no, who would like to happen here and be available.
So our annual report, which really is just what went on, and most importantly, is to identify any patterns in variances or patterns in anomalies in our zoning. I don't think there are any based on looking at this.
I'll take a look at it.
Right.
And then I can advise the board at the next meeting. I mean, you do this every year. And now, again, this is another thing that we can add into the mix to look at everything from a global and cohesive perspective, and if we need to make some changes to the master plan or the ordinances to address what we've done here. If there is some kind of trend, we can certainly do that. I could take a look and let you know at the next meeting.
Right, and then, because then I'd like for Chris to be able to go back at, you know, be able to, you know, report back and say, hey, listen, the planning board is going to be looking for, fill in the blank, based on this. Because the one thing we've really not done is when we, even when we did the master plan, we still have recommendations in our master plan from 2010 that have not been adopted as ordinances. And that's the whole idea, so think about, we're 10 years later, we're gonna be rewriting it. So once we rewrite it, that's why I want to have this, a lot of participation to be able to say, now we need ordinances that back this up.
Well, that's because 10 years ago, we were told the council should take lead on that. And since then, we've been educated and said, you know what, you can take lead, so.
We can take lead.
Right, so we're happy to.
There you go.
We're happy to.
Okay, moving right along, just to keep them with chair items. We will, I just, we will, we do have bills there.
Yes.
I haven't seen them.
I just wanted, I wanted to, there are bills.
They were circulated.
Okay, who's did the.
Nothing, Betsy has the bills. So I want to make sure that I both welcome again our newest members and thank those members that have been here for a long time. It's been a lot of fun. I don't take anything lightly. I understand, we all understand what everybody on this board goes through. It is, I like to say it every year to remind myself, that as we all know, nothing is ever 100% right or 100% wrong. I mean, or you only get 100% right or 100% wrong. There's never gray. There's never gray, and I appreciate everybody up here, because when it comes down to it, it's either a yes or a no. And many people don't understand that and don't understand the pressure that we're under to be able to follow the municipal land use law. And I do thank all the sleepless nights that I'm sure that many of you have. And so, thank you, and I look forward to an exciting 2020. So we do have bills. I think there are some folks that may not have seen the bills. And after the bills, I can go on the agenda. We will be going into executive session this evening to discuss personnel and pending litigation. At that point, I really, Eileen and Kara, I need you guys to stay. The rest of the professionals, you can go and have a very merry holiday. And, but we're not to that point yet, so I need, once we're done looking over the bills, I need a motion in a second.
Kara, I have a question. So if I want to raise a potential conflict of interest regarding the executive session and pending litigation, should that be done in open session or in the executive session?
With something that we're planning on discussing in executive session? I think the issue should be addressed before we have any discussion on the topic. It's up to you if you'd like to bring that up in open session or closed session, but certainly we should address the issue and come to a determination on it prior to having any sort of discussion.
Okay, bills?
Give us one more second.
And it's go that way, too.
No, we went that way.
No, it went that way.
You went the way.
It was, it was Todd with the long sentence.
No, they didn't see me that.
You saw, right?
Yeah.
Oh, you.
No, I missed it.
No? Because you keep putting right the meeting you were starting.
Send those back down.
And if you remember, if you remember the two lists, we are not voting to pay the bills because we are legally obligated to pay a bill when we receive it from a professional. We are auditing the bills to make sure that the time spent and it makes sense from an application perspective. I always like to say that, so instead of a motion to pay the bills, it's really a motion to audit the bills because those bills will be paid once the issue of PO.
Could I ask a question while you're waiting? Could somebody explain what the shamish shrine is asking to do?
Oh, Harrikan.
Harrikan?
Harrikan.
No, I'm not.
You should go and look at the application. It's here. It's pretty straightforward if you come in and look at it.
But can you just tell me in three sentences?
I'll talk the after.
Thank you, Mr. K.
Rather not, especially when the applicant is not here. If you want to do that off the record, I can't tell you what to do, but. Okay, motion to audit the bills. Eileen?
Mr. Hane?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mrs. Inglis?
Yes.
Mr. Campney?
Yes.
Mayor Driver?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Frederick?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Budney?
Yes.
Okay, I remember, twelve on the agenda is the executive session. Let me thank the public.
Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Everybody just really happy. So what we're doing is we're going into executive session to discuss, as you indicated, personnel issues involving RFPs, pending litigation involving the Friends of Flemington, Burke versus the Borough, Flemington, and additional parties. That matters currently within the Superior Court. There will be no formal action taken during executive session. The minutes will be made available when they are no longer subject to the executive session limitations. And when you make the motion to adopt the resolution going into executive session, you must indicate to everyone whether or not you're coming back.
Okay, and we will not be coming back, so the adjournment will, the public session will be as soon as we dabble. And we will go into executive session, but to members of the public, no need to wait outside.
Beth, call me tomorrow.
I'm in a conference all day tomorrow.
What?
Can we talk on Friday? I'm in a conference all day tomorrow.
Tell me when you're done at the conference.
Can I talk to you at night? Yeah, okay.
Call me anytime. It's always done.
Do you want to address any conflict issues now?
No, we'll just.
Okay, so we are doing the motion.
Is it a motion to go into executive?
Motion to go into executive session.
All in favor?
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so now we're in the executive session.
So, yeah, I just wanted to.
Are we not recording?
No, hold on, hold on. Thank you for your reminder.
Not recording and not.
Not broadcast.
It is, I don't want to, you know. We can always get into that.
That would have been a bad thing.
Okay.
Betsy, tell us, tell us when we are.
I'm, well.